Six o'clock, call, meeting order, City of Animals, the city council agenda, regular session, Monday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, six P M., Animals Library and Learning Center, also via Zoom. One point zero roll call.
Crump, Smith, here, Mauckart.
Here.
Zomba.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Cameron.
Here.
Note all members present and in council chambers. Point zero, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point zero approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan, any discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve agenda carried unanimous. Four point zero, motion to approve the minutes from following meetings. Four point one, August ninth, twenty-twenty-one, regular city council meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jeff, second by Galen. Any discussion on the minutes is submitted. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve minutes is submitted, carried unanimous. Five point zero, public hearings. Five point one, public hearing on proposed plans, specs, and cost estimate for the well number six, project bid package number one, well drilling. I will open the public hearing and proceed with proceedings.
Have you had any responses or anything?
Nope, I've had no written or verbal comments prior to the meeting.
None from the public, all meditation, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Discussion from council. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to close the public hearing carried unanimous. Five point two, resolution accepting the plans and specifications, accepting bid, and awarding contract to Gingrich Well and Pump Service L L C. For the well number six bid package number one, well drilling.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by K, second by Rich. For the council discussion. Any public comment?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Marsh from H R Green in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I'm the engineer that helped with the design of the well project. I'm here to answer any questions tonight on either of the bid packages.
Council, you have any questions for Andrew on the package for well drilling? Hear none, any public comment? Beth, would you conduct a roll vote?
Capron?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mauckart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion to approve and award package carried unanimously. Five point three, public hearing on proposed plans, specs, and cost estimate for the well number six project bid package number two, well equipment and pipeline. I will open the public hearing. Proceeds.
Any comments?
No comments, verbal or written prior to the meeting. Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Any further council discussion?
Beth, remind us, on the financing of this, is this a revenue bond?
It's an S R F one.
Which is a revenue bond, for one.
Correct.
We had four bids.
Four bids for the wellhouse, correct.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan, close the public hearing. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carry to close the public hearing. Five point four, resolution accepting the plans and specifications, accepting bid and awarding contract to Boomerang Corporation for the well number six bid package number two, well equipment and pipeline.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Rich. Any further council discussion? Council have any questions for Andrew on package number two, well equipment and pipeline? Does the public have any comment or questions? Hearing none, Beth, please conduct a roll vote.
Mauckart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion approved, unanimous to award the contract for well, well number six, package number two, well equipment and pipeline. Five point five, review and approval of professional services agreement, amendment number two for well number six, Andrew Marsh, H R Green.
Been here to answer any questions on our construction phase.
No questions from council? Does the public have any questions? Entertain a motion on the approval of the service agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by K, council discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. Six point zero, proclamations, none. Seven point zero, old business. Seven point one, project status update from H R Green, Andrew Marsh. Doesn't appear that Josh is joining you this evening.
I'm the lucky one to see. You're stuck with me, sorry.
Budget dollars.
In your council packets this evening is a brief update on various projects that we're helping on. And again, here to answer any questions that you may have on any of the projects. Just very, very quickly, the Sycamore Street Rehab Project, that design is complete. But we are missing the easement with the private landowner. I've made several attempts to contact the private landowner to see if there are any questions that he has that I can answer, but I have not connected with him yet. Regarding the five-way intersection TEEP study that is underway and all of the agreement is in place with the D O T, so that is underway and we will be scheduling a kickoff meeting with the city staff shortly. Well, six, as you well know, has just been approved to proceed into construction, so we will get the notice to proceed out to the both, both of the contractors for each package. And the J S update is there on the document. We are also involved with one other product that I didn't put in writing because it's somewhat confidential, it's the emergency response planning effort underway at the Water Truva plant. So we have submitted a draft for the staff to review and comment. We are well ahead of schedule on that, it's not due until the end of the year.
You had mentioned that you're waiting on a agreement with a private landowner?
Yes.
For the Sycamore project?
Yes, sir.
Ample contact, ample. They've been contacted ample times.
Left three voicemails for the homeowner and haven't connected with him. I thought I'd do my part to try to answer any questions that he has, see if we can come to some agreement for getting that easement placed.
Without it, the project stalls as it is?
That's fair, yes. We looked at ways to modify the design to not impact the property and it's really very, very difficult to do that without impacting that property because of the grade elevation of the yard. Will need to get his involvement or approval, I should say.
It is just for going, it is just for the construction phase to be on his property. The retaining wall itself is not on his property.
Correct.
Right way.
We just need a temporary easement for construction.
Construction, that's it, it's not a permanent easement, it's just a temporary construction.
Correct.
So have you reached out to him? And no response?
No, we got the response of the last meeting he was here for.
Okay.
Is it just like damage to the yard that would have to be repaired, like grass or something like that? What is it?
That would be repaired.
That would be restored as part of the project.
Yeah.
He wants the remainder of the sidewalk on the other side of the property replaced as part of the deal. And we would need to replace everyone's sidewalk then, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's precedent.
It's not a permanent easement, it's not like we're purchasing a piece of this property. We're just really going to have to approach on it to put the wall on on this. And I think he said something about wanting a railing on the top of it or.
Well, I think he asked about a railing that, I don't know if that's a
issue.
Issue because it's on our property, it's not on his.
The other thing that I was thinking about when I heard about the railing, you know, it was stated that it would protect kids from jumping off of that. Well, kids like to climb railings and then jump off of them too. I think that if you keep, if you keep that railing out of there, it'd be closer to the ground, they wouldn't hit quite as hard.
And it's also.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, if this is correct, the, the area of the sidewalk on the request is no bearing on this project in any way that is adjacent to.
Right away, right. Well.
If it was impacted by the project, it would be replaced, yeah.
Would, would not a portion of that be impacted by the project because of the handicap slope that needs to be?
But we'll put all new in, I mean, anything that's impacted the city.
Right, so part of that sidewalk is impacted by.
To an end point, yeah.
To a point.
Yeah.
Not the whole side.
Not, that's, that is, is my understanding.
And, and just out of curiosity, how much are we talking that is not impacted by the project? Are we talking thirty feet, fifty feet, what are we talking about? That long?
Roland, Jacob, like maybe seventy-five.
Shane, could you please come up and state your name? That's all right.
Shane Brown Streets Department, I think we're going to impact about seventy-five feet. And then his property is pretty good size, I think we're about another hundred, hundred, a hundred twenty-five feet more. So what we're going to do is we're going to the first utility pool and then we're going to the south. I've also tried to contact him also, so, and I've got no answer.
What kind of shape is the remaining sidewalk?
It's not, it's not good. It's cracked.
Well.
There's grass growing up in it.
But is some of that due to the water shut off and so forth that was right there?
That's back a lot further.
No, but is that part of the sidewalk that would need to be replaced by him?
Yeah.
Was that due, because wasn't that water shut off, was that dug up and?
No, they bored underneath that.
They bored underneath?
Just a quick question, the entire property is approximately just under a hundred, hundred twenty-eight-ish feet deep on Williams going on. So how many few of that on the corner is impacted?
We're just going to that first utility hole, so whatever that is, so maybe sixty-five, seventy feet, not that much.
Half of it. It's a hundred twenty-five, I mean, that pole roughly, like Shane said, sixty-five, seventy feet up, so.
So we're going to replace half that sidewalk, is that all you're saying?
Well, if they do, you know, with the handicap, you know, what they gotta do, that'll be replaced, correct? But you have to make it A D A compliant?
Yes, I think it's concerns, he just replaced the sidewalk brand new from his house, that would be tore out.
But we're going to look at the brand new sidewalk back in, it's not like we're putting the old sidewalk in this brand new sidewalk here.
And he knew this project was coming. He could have, he could have waited till we've started on the project and, and he would have got, he wouldn't have had to do it.
We've got a free one.
Yeah.
So Andrew, the longer this is prolonged, when would it be an issue for getting the project done in a period of time?
The project's designed for the most part, that'll be good forever, presumably so, as soon as the easement's in place, we can proceed. At this point, construction will take place this year, any, or it's possible, or if we got the easement, you know, next week, you know, it can be bid right away. Are you really thinking of it happening this year yet?
We probably have spring construction, I guess, if we did it later, if we did it this year.
I would just be fearful that we would drop down the list of the contractor that is awarded because of not getting this go off right away.
Right, I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't recommend proceeding with bidding at this time.
No.
Right. Without the easement in place, it's, it's not worth bidding, in my opinion.
So is there anything we can do to help this move along?
I mean, if you're, if you're going to grant the, a temporary construction easement, you give somebody that much of a value, then you're going to have to do that from now on. Because it's not like we're getting a permanent easement again.
Yeah.
We're getting a temporary easement and they will be made whole. So you're just going to set a precedent that you can hold the city hostage if you want something in exchange for your construction easement. And we have a lot of hills, just saying.
So this is, this is something.
A lot of bad sidewalks, right?
This is something that could be drug out for two, three years if they wanted to.
Yeah.
And we have no power to do anything about it.
Not that I know of, but it is restricting us from making it A D A compliant, I don't know if that's but as long as we don't tear the road out, we aren't required to make a change.
I think we would just move on to the next priority
Right.
intersection and make those.
We have, there's a lot of other streets that could use the.
Yeah.
We could use the bus.
Have you experienced anything like this in the past, how, how have you navigated it in past experiences?
Asking an engineer about easements, it's a little bit outside of my control, but it certainly is a challenge for our products to proceed without them. And, and that is true of temporary and permanent easement. So the more we can reach out to the public and just have a conversation with them on the benefits of the project, make sure that everyone's comfortable the look and the feel of the improvements, that's the best we can do.
Well, maybe we're just moved and look into another project and skip this one for now.
I mean, it'll be shovel ready whenever we're ready to go. Shane has plenty of other streets that need attention.
Well, let's give it one more attempt and then Shane, you come up with your plans, B, C, and D.
Do you want to?
One more attempt is in Andrew's, H R Green, making an attempt to
Yep.
contact the individual.
Yep, and, and Andrew, if you want, I would be glad to be in on a conference call if you want to try it and see what happens.
Sounds good, thank you. Do want to try and send a letter, just if you don't hear response, just to let them know what we're, we're at.
For, well, I.
Cities we have. Either one, either.
Yeah, I, I think if we can get a conference call, we can relay that message that.
I'm just saying, if you don't, if you aren't successful, then. Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry about the heartburn here. So seven point one was just a status update, there's no action items other than our discussion. Seven point two, downtown facade project update and discussion and possible action on change order. Eight for the downtown facade project, Derek Lumsden. Back, it looks like Derek is joining us virtually.
Yes. Sorry. Good evening, thank you, everyone, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight because of a family thing, but I did clear it with Beth. So on the C D B G side, I'll start with the updates. We have all ten of the buildings being touched, we have several I beams and masonry work done, as you probably saw last week, they've started painting, they moved down to Tucker's. That storefront is almost completely torn out and ready to get measured for its new storefront. And they've been doing masonry work on that building. Unfortunately, the supply chain issue has hit the aluminum. We were hoping we'd get that in the next couple of weeks for the first couple of storefronts. That looks like it's going to be delayed at least another month. Andy said that his best guess is that as soon as they come in, he will get them done. But his goal now is to get all the storefronts sort of torn out and measured and ready to go. So when they come in, they just need to pop them in and do a little bit of trim work. So we're still on schedule as of the moment to be done in December. But we're just going to have to shake around the schedule a little bit differently than we planned. But otherwise, things have been going good, I've heard compliments from the building owners that they're keeping it relatively, they're keeping the area cleaned up, they're doing a good job communicating. And that, you know, when they have questions, they can either get ahold of Andy or myself to answer them. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from the posters that we put up on the buildings as well as the ones online. As I try to put one up about each week, a rendering to show what the building will look like and the address for that particular building. So I think it's building a lot of momentum and we have a lot of people already asking about the north side of Main Street. But I think it's going well, just a couple of the technical glitches on things we can't control like supply chain, but we're managing to keep people busy and keep moving the project forward. The other thing we have tonight is the change order, we did not have ready for last time. This is just a deduction from Tucker's on some, I think it was some window work because we had to make a change in one of the windows. But other than that, I'm here to answer any questions on the C D B G project.
I don't have a question, Derek, but it's nice to see that progression.
Yep, and it's, I think it's looking good and especially they're starting to do some of the painting and they're paneling some of the, where the storefronts will go. And they're going to, like I said, they're going to tear out the next two, I think, over the next month and get them ready to go. But hopefully by, you know, the time of updating you in September, we're starting to see stuff go back into some of these buildings, whether it's first story or second story, so we can start checking off some completion angles for this. But that's what we're hoping for at the moment.
Council have any questions or comment, additional comments for Derek on the downtown facade project? Is there any questions from the public that is in attendance in the chambers? We need a motion for the change order, Beth.
Move to approve the change orders, as suggested.
Motion by K, second by Rich, further council discussion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve change order carried unanimous. Seven point three, childcare feasibility study update, Derek Lumsden.
All right, thank you, everyone, and for some of you that have heard this before, I apologize, it's going to be a little bit of a repeat. But as you know, Jones County Economic Development did a feasibility study earlier this spring and into the summer looking at childcare in Jones County and what the future looks like. We surveyed three groups of people, which are families. We surveyed childcare providers and we surveyed businesses. We took all the data we got from that and compared it with some of the state data that comes out through childcare resource and referral. And then our consultants put together a list of three suggestions that they thought would help us moving forward as we handle the childcare situation. So I'm going to go over a little bit of the data as well as some of the suggestions that were covered as well. And finally end with some of the next steps that we're doing. So from the survey itself, if you compared it to some of our neighboring counties like Jackson and Manchester or Delaware counties and even Cedar, you noticed that we have lost ten percent of our childcare spots in the last couple of years. However, we have not lost as many as some of our neighboring counties, which is good news for us because we still have a decent amount of childcare. But that comparatively rural regions are losing childcare at a faster rate than some of the other regions. So it's something that we're going to keep an eye on from a regional perspective, but it also matters from a Jones County perspective. The other thing, the other side of that, which I'll touch in one of the suggestions, but with a low childcare percentage and low childcare rates, it's also something that impacts our school districts. So I'll talk about that in a little bit, but just something to be thinking about in the back of your mind. So from the, the data that we gathered, we saw that the number of families that are currently looking for childcare in Jones County are seventy-one. So that's probably a minimum of seventy-one kids, plus or minus a few, depending on if anybody is currently pregnant and looking in advance or parents that have more than one child. So seventy-one families is a lot, even spread out over Jones County's four school districts, that's quite a few kids looking for childcare services. There's no one center or one childcare provider that can cover all of those. And even if there were open spots at a number of the childcare providers, we still cannot handle seventy-one at all of the ones we currently know about combined. So even if we had every childcare provider full, there would still be people actively looking. The timeframe that most people are looking for, for childcare is Monday through Friday from six A M. to six P M. Not a surprise, given the vast amount of people that work for shift, but it was something that I think surprised a lot of our businesses that are twenty-four, seven operations because they thought there would need a lot, at least on second shift. Overall, that's not proven the case and that's usually because parents don't always work the same shift, so they have a trade-off area or they can get someone to stay with the kids for an hour in between shifts. We have sixteen families that filled out the survey that travel twenty to sixty minutes per day for childcare outside of Jones County. We have thirteen families that travel ten to twenty miles outside of Jones County. So you have a lot of people, a lot of kids potentially to travel outside of Jones County looking for care. And that could be because of the hours, it could be because it's more convenient for the parents. It could be a lot of different factors, but that's something to keep in mind, we have people leaving Jones County to go get childcare for some reason or another. And for those of you that are familiar with my situation, prior to all my children being in school during the school year, we were one of those families. When the childcare center shut, shut down in the Midland School District, we ended up going outside the county to Cascade to, it was the only place we could find a childcare center that could take all three of our kids and meet our, the hours that we needed childcare. So it's something that I have firsthand experience with, so I'm not really surprised at the numbers. But it's something that we want to keep in mind moving forward as we entertain childcare discussions in the future that people are leaving Jones County for childcare. Some of the other things we found, that three centers have closed in the last few years, two of those have been associated with school. Two of those have been associated with school districts. One was the Anamosa School District and one was the Midland School District. And it's kind of a weird shift because in the last several years. Childcare centers have teamed up well with school districts and those school districts have seen an influx of children. So Easton Valley over in Jackson County, Andrew in Jackson County, Loudon. What's the other one I'm thinking of? Delmar and there's a couple, Lisbon, there's a couple others that have associated childcare centers with their school districts. And have seen school district attendance increase. And that's one of the things, looking over the last 10 years, childcare data in Jones County. The only school district in the last 10 years to net a positive is the Midland School District. All the other three, the other three school districts have lost almost every single year since 2010 into this current school year. There's been a blip or two every now and then, up a couple of kids. But overall, the overwhelming information has been trending down. So that might be something as we move into some of the suggestions of how we move forward. Is trying to get those school districts to reconsider whether or not childcare makes sense for long term engagement in the community. We also noticed that childcare workforce is probably the biggest deterrent in keeping childcare centers or childcare operations open. We found that wages and benefits were well below what they needed to be in order to keep quality and talented staff or to be able to recruit them in the first place. And that's something that we're seeing across the country as people can go back to job or go to jobs that pay 15, 20 bucks an hour. Where childcare still pays about eight. And even a director spot in a childcare center may only pay about 10. So that's something that they're having a hard time recruiting and a hard time keeping. Even though the schedule is pretty good on a Monday through Friday and they have their weekends free. But childcare is this unique business model where it's based on the number of clients that will be there any given day. So you may think you need 10 staff members, but only half the kids show up that you thought you needed the staff for. So those other staff members get sent home without pay. It's not something like a grocery store clerk or whatever, that if not the amount of people came in, we still pay those people because they're there and working and doing something. Childcare doesn't have that situation. It's kind of a, it's a unique situation. It's a unique workforce. And it's something that unless we can figure out systemically how to fix the wages and benefits. To keep them working or doing something, we're gonna have a situation where there's always gonna be a detriment to working in childcare. So some of the suggestions that came out of the analysis of all this data from our consultants was three things. One, that Jones County should set up a childcare task force as a whole. And then it should be a mix of local stakeholders, childcare advocates, public entities, private businesses. Just trying to get a mix of people across the spectrum from all the different school areas, from all the different towns. From rural versus non-rural to get a good idea of here, these people have ideas, these people are invested in trying to make childcare work. Trying to grow the population of Jones County. What can we do to help make childcare sort of on the, the front and center priority? As some of you know, if you saw the census data, Jones County plateaued over the course of the last census. Almost every town with the exception of three lost population. And Jones County as a whole, from 2010 to 2020, grew eight people. So less than one person per year in terms of growth. And so that's not sustainable over the long term. And the school districts proved that as well with how many kids they're losing per year and over the course of the last decade. So setting up a childcare task force, which is sort of, it's not something that would be. Administered or put under a specific government entity like a Parks and Rec or anything like that. But something that a group of dedicated people that'd be willing to meet and try to help address situation. Kind of like angel investors do when an area needs revitalized. Some, something similar would need to be done from a childcare perspective. But it would need to have people that are dedicated and from a mix, a variety of sources in order to make it successful. And it's gonna take time to build up that, that resource capacity. The second thing we're looking at from the, from the survey was the childcare incentive program. A lot of counties and cities across the state do something. The one that's listed in the childcare study is from Dubuque. Where they give incentives to home based providers or to people that are wanting to open home based childcare. So they give them startup money to help get them either go from non-registered to registered, which falls under the DHS guidelines. To help get some equipment, to help get themselves up and running. Based on what they saw from the 71 families looking, that they thought with any luck. A childcare incentive program could get five new homes or five expanded homes by the end of 2022 is a goal. To give the sort of a baseline of how can we reach this? So maybe it's taking a current provider that only houses five kids and seeing if we can get that provider up to 10 kids or 12 kids. And doing it through an incentive program to help get them through the tedious paperwork or to help get them extra supplies in order to get them in that situation. So that's something we'll be working with childcare resource and referral on as well as early childhood Iowa to see what possibilities might exist out there. And who might be good targets for something like that. And then, of course, as people have, people they know that want to open childcare, they know people that are non-registered that might like to go to register to get some of this funding. We're happy to assist with that as well. We've also looked at some other incentive options. Like I said, the one in the study is from Dubuque. But there are others around the state that we've been looking at as well to see if there might be good ways to cobble them something together or pull directly from a different one. The final thing that they suggested is sort of in two parts. And this is that they said every two to three years, we should probably be redoing the survey. As people move in and out, as school districts change, as people graduate, potentially move away, as new people move in. We need to keep a clear picture of the childcare situation. Doing it once every decade or once, you know, every 20 years isn't gonna tell us what we need to do to maintain a quality childcare situation. So they recommended doing that every couple of years, putting out, doing like we did, using the schools, using Survey Monkey, using the Facebook, using childcare providers. Getting it done that way so we can continue to assess the data every couple of years. The other thing they said that is if a childcare center, so not home based, but a childcare center was ever to be built in Jones County. Based on what they saw from traffic flow and workforce development and such. They thought the best location for it would be somewhere along the Lynn County, Jones County line or somewhere in that area. Because that way, those people that tended to track out of Jones County were headed primarily towards Lynn County. Maybe they would drop their children off at a Jones County childcare center if it was convenient. And then they could still impact local school districts. So they said that that was an example, especially with the way childcare centers have been closing, including the one that recently closed in Cedar Rapids. A hundred, certainly have nowhere else to go. It's something for us to keep an eye on because depending on how people move with jobs or how that might change their availability. We're gonna have to be ready for childcare. And as things like work from home come up, how does part time care impact some of those numbers? So that's sort of the, the information we got, some of the suggestions we got based on the data. What Jones County Economic Development is doing now is getting out to some of our stakeholders. Obviously, Anamosa was a stakeholder that put in with us to try to find out this information. So we're going out to our public stakeholders, school boards, city councils, as well as Jones County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting with private companies. We're meeting with childcare providers. We're also meeting with nonprofits like the Jones County Community Foundation to see, you know, what other options are out there, who might be interested. And our goal is to try to convene a group of really intense and dedicated individuals, probably in late October. Just to get together and see what can we do, how can we move forward, whether it's with the task force, whether it's with the incentives, maybe a multi-pronged approach. And go from there, because we don't want this to just grow lax. We don't want the study to sit on a shelf. We want to do something with it. So that's why I'm here tonight discussing it with, with the Anamosa City Council, as well as continuing to get out to other entities and discuss as well. I know that was a lot of information, but I'm happy to take some questions.
May have overwhelmed us.
It's definitely possible. I know it was a 24-page report and I don't know how many people had a chance to read it. And like I said, I didn't get all the details. Those were just some of the highlights. So, but it's something that if, once we get the date set, especially for the October meeting, I'll be sending that out to Beth so she can get that out to all of you. If any of you want to be there, if you have ideas, if you're interested in trying to help us solve this continuous problem, we'd be happy to have the input.
As far as informative, is there anything else that you would like to see from the council this evening? Other than them throwing their support behind you?
Not at the moment. The one thing that would help me if people have access to it or know people do. The one area that the childcare survey really couldn't address, because we just don't have the data. If you know childcare providers, if you would shoot me their name and their number, just so I could reach out to them. Some of them might not be registered and if they're non-registered, we don't have any record of who, you know, who they are, if, how we get in touch with them. If we knew how many non-registered were out there, that might help us with the incentive program and maybe we get more people registered. So people, when they go to DHS to be like, is there childcare in Anamosa? We could show a bigger list than what currently shows. And maybe that would help convince people that, you know, they could live in Anamosa and have their kids go somewhere whilst, even if they had to work somewhere else. So if anything other than support, a list of childcare providers that you all know personally would be huge.
This council, I have anything else? Is there any public comment or questions from Derek?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening on both of these agenda items. I just look forward for working, working with you, especially on this childcare.
Perfect. Thank you.
Seven point four, project status update from Snyder and Associates, Lindsey Beaman, Tim Wallace. Looks like there's no Tim unless he's joining us virtually.
No, he's listening again, but no, I'm, I'm here. I got it.
You lost the coin toss, right?
No, we did have our public information meeting was that, man, that was more than a week ago now for the roundabout projects. And I, I know I saw most of you there, so I think you have a pretty good clue how it went. It was fairly low key, not a lot of attendance and who did come was mostly just in, you know, curious about the project and where it's going from here. So it was, I think, well received. Nothing, there was nothing to write down that was any sort of objection or complaint, my knowledge. For other projects, I know that we're still working with the flow utilization base and they're still going back and forth on some of that stuff. I think we finally got I T C to give some clear indication on exactly they wanted to see. So Beth's aware of all that. And on the second street, that lift station phase two work, I know that it's on us to meet with you guys about more scope stuff. We're waiting for RagBra to pass and I'm just now remembering we need to do that now that RagBra has passed. So that was just that stuff that was gonna be next season work anyway, so. I think that is everything I know about.
Counsel, have any questions or comments for Lindsey?
So with, was it I T C?
Yeah.
How far off are we to getting those easements and everything in place?
I think that was all about, that's part of the holdup for acquiring the land, yes.
Yeah, so the easements are in place. We've got a clear map of where they're at now, so now they just have to work around. Which I don't think is that big of a deal.
Twelve feet. They finally said the dimension that they wanted to, that was what we were all waiting to find out.
So how far off are you from starting the project?
Yeah, we can go now. We're waiting to make sure we can build something in this site before.
Good.
We weren't gonna design anything to fit here and have I T C say, nope, can't build it here. And so it took apparently a lot of pulling at different threads to get them to give us a number. I don't know why that was so hard for them.
I told, I told, we were just ready to close. Regardless, it's still our yard waste area. We still need it no matter what.
Right.
So I said, we just need to move forward, get it closed. So I think that's what we're waiting on at the moment is just to.
Now that we know that, we're good. We'll go, as you said, to go.
Yeah, yeah. So we were kind of holding off on doing the boring samples until we knew for sure.
It was a viable site.
Yeah. So we should be good.
Good.
I'm the right away for those great separation. It's, I assume it's just for the, the right away for this project, not the future, it's just this.
Yeah, that's what we talked about at the, at the public meeting too. And yeah, we'll, I mean, we'll work with Beth too on what, what right of ways presented for the appraisal and negotiations.
Well, thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Seven point five, final reading and adoption of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property. In the July 2021 addition to the animals corridor urban renewal area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Allen. Also a discussion. Public comment. Beth, conduct the roll vote, please.
Smith? Yes. Scout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Lockhart?
Yes.
Soppa?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point zero, new business. Eight point one, review, review and approval of outside agency funding application form.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Counsel, a discussion.
I like it.
It's pretty basic, but it covers everything.
Yep.
I did reinvent the wheel. I've used this form previously for six or seven years, so it worked fine. Gives more information about where the funds would go.
Well, I've been wanting to have more of a formal application process for this and I think this covers it. And if, if not, we can always adapt as we go along. But I like it.
Want to have it sent out for, before we send checks in October? For the current round or do you want to have it start with the next round? It might be nice for different groups to see what they're going to be requested to fill out.
Okay.
Is October when the motel goes out from, from this year's?
Right. So generally it's after the first order, after we've received our first order installment. Yeah, different, different funding requests have a different schedule likes. The ones that come out of general fund are a little different, like Derek's funds, he just submits me a bill quarterly or invoice quarterly. And then tourism, he's usually really good about sending me a invoice as well.
Because they get, tourism gets two different.
Correct. So they get per capita, which is guaranteed, it's state code, and then the allotment that's given to the.
Any public comment on the application form? All those in favor of approving for you signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point two, discussion and possible action on downtown banners.
So Shane and I have talked several times about the downtown banners. They've been piecing them together the best they can, but they could really use to be replaced. In talking about this, Shane had talked to Iowa Prison Industries because they make the banners. Then in thinking about that, we thought, well, it's their anniversary coming up. Perhaps we could offer to let them hang banners of their own. On their, for their anniversary year. And then we could order some to hang after that. But I didn't want to do that without consulting first and making sure that everybody was okay with that. Shane had looked at the banners they have up in Monticello, which kind of show a. Historical picture of the building near where the banner is or different historical buildings in town. Otherwise, I mean, we can entertain other ideas and maybe have a vote, you know, like have an informal poll. People get to just, you know. Have some input in what they'd like to see maybe.
Well, I like the idea of discussing with the reformatory of possibly allowing them to use for their anniversary type thing. You know, they've been an important part of the community for so long that I want to, I think we ought to continue a good relationship with them. So I'd make a motion to, at least at this point in time, reach out to them. See if they would like to do something with the banners. And then we can try to decide what we want to do after that at some point in time.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. At this time, it's just to generate the discussion.
Well, it's to reach out to the, the reformatory.
And see if they're interested, and if they are, then we could put up their.
Then they can hang banners, or how, whatever they wanna do, and then that gives us time to figure out what we wanna do.
The current ones, they're the ones that have the different pictures on them, they got business names on the bottom of them.
Yeah, so, um, Chamber on streets. So there's J and P Cycles, there's Iowa Prison Industries, Grant Wood, and there's the high school, M, the, the Raiders, some, I believe. There was four of them, we're down to eleven, so we couldn't put eleven up on, I think there's forty-three. So we didn't know how to space that out, so we just left them in a box. I did take some down, one or two down to Lant Boone, and I didn't hear nothing back on that, so.
Didn't they have some for the pumpkin fest, too?
They, yeah, I think they had a pumpkin fest one, too, you're right, yep.
They were made by the high school. Were they, the way they were.
The chamber, they're probably about ten years old, I think, honestly, the chamber bought the ones that are down there. They've got like the Gothic on the motorcycle, yeah, they're like a heavy vinyl.
Yep, but they're shot, so, I mean, we're down, like I said, we're down to eleven, I couldn't put eleven back up. I mean, it would look odd, you couldn't space them, right? So we just left them in a box for this year, and then I keep getting brochures on it, and I set them on the corner of my desk, and I look at them. But then I went to Monticello to the fair, and over there by the pool, they've got the whole line all the way to Main Street done on their new poles, and then even Springville. We went into Springville for supper the other night, and Springville did the, the whole thing, their whole Main Street, it looks nice.
But they have like the energy and, and door, not door, but Polo plastic, and, and what's Orbis, they have them on some of them.
Yeah, but, but there's a split, like, the downtown buildings are on there. Like their historical building, and their libraries on there, and their city hall. You know what I mean, it's just different stuff, I mean, it's just like, you know, like, I don't know. I just looked at a few of them, you know, while you're driving, and you go, oh, look at that, it looks nice.
I just noticed.
And ours are in a box.
I just noticed Orbis and the Polo and Energy. I just sort of noticed them, I didn't notice, and I seen the library.
Is it something, are they big enough, you can notice it by driving by, or do you have to stop?
Oh, no, no, they're just like what these were, they're all big enough, they're like two and a half foot by eighteen inches, I think. I, I just, it's been, it's been something that's been on my desk, and it just looked odd without, without them there all summer, I guess, so it was just a thought.
But if you know they're there, you can, you know, you can see them, yes.
They're nice.
Another thought is, we incorporate, now, we had that branding with the Wayfind signage, we maybe incorporate something that would kind of go along with that too, I don't know, or maybe both ideas, I don't know.
Marion's got a street where they're, they've got veterans on their banners, which I thought was really a, a cool thing.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point three, discussion of possible action on the appointment of new park board members, Bruce Mile, Mindy Brown, and Haley Adam, as recommended by the Anamosa Park Board.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Rich, second by John. Council discussion.
Just one quick question. Bruce used to be, used to work at the center, does he still work there? Okay.
Public comment. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve. The members carried unanimous. Eight point four, review and approval of new, of new tobacco permit for Main Street Tobacco.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Galen. Council discussion. Public comment. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve permit carried unanimous. Eight point five, review and approval of current bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Allen, second by Kay. Discussion on the bills is submitted. Does the public have any comment on the bills before the council? All those in favor of approving the bills as submitted signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point zero, city administrators' report.
Well, we're just plugging away, summer's passing us by quickly, so. Still working on balancing June and the new system, but we're getting close. Mainly just working on trying to integrate everything. As far as our audit goes, it's still on its way, haven't seen it yet. I have received their notes, I have gotten everything back to them in a timely manner, so. Eventually, we'll get that. We are scheduled to have our audit again next year in February, so.
I was gonna say, when, when was that conducted, when did they have those initial rap?
Um, we started in March, so we had the kickoff in March, and then our wrap-up was at the end of May, I think. So. It's been a little. It's been challenging during, doing it virtually. At least I've found it a little challenging, so I have let them know that we're, our legacy system is gonna be going away before we do the next audit. So hopefully they can send me my list of reports they're requiring, so I can have them ready. They did last year, last year, last August, I got the initial request for documents, so hopefully I get that again this year, and be ready, ready to go. Other than that, we, if you haven't stopped in City Hall, there's been a lot of changes made with our filing, so the background looks a lot different now. It's kinda nice. And we are.
You can find things, right?
You can, absolutely, it's, it's really, it's really good. We are gonna have a contract with a shredding company to come in and get the bulk of it, because we're not burning anymore, and a lot of it can't be recycled, because it has sensitive information, so. We're gonna try and coordinate that, they're, they're in town about once a month, so we're hoping in September, we've got a pretty large pile going right now, so.
Does council have any questions for Beth? Thanks for the report, Beth. Ten point zero, mayor and council reports, ten point one, mayor's report. Nothing to report. Ten point two, council reports.
I would just like to remind everybody that the library is going to have a levy on the November ballot, hopefully it will be positive, but in order to get it there, there has to be three hundred and thirty signatures, and so if a friend of the library or anybody asks you to sign, please do.
Do they have a sheet here at the library for people to sign?
I'm not sure they can.
Can they?
I think they have to go, I think they have to go around.
Door to door.
Door to door, because it would be a conflict of interest, if the inference was in order to get a book from the library, you've gotta sign.
Well.
I know, I know.
Parks and Rec, just a couple of things, the last day for the pool was yesterday, they're now closed for the year. They're playing to get new stainless steel gutters replaced on the edge of the pool. That's the labor fabric, those should be installed this fall. If anybody's interested, they're gonna be doing a co-ed adult slow pitch softball. It's gonna be Chicago style, it's no well, it's a sixteen-inch ball. And they're gonna be starting youth like football, third and fourth grade that plays, Cascade of Monticello. What's going on down there?
Okay, Jeff, thank you for those reports. Eleven point zero, public comment from items not on the agenda. Twelve point zero, adjournment.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Rich, second by John, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion adjourned carried unanimous.